Okay, you may just one second.
Yanni looks different on screen.
Yeah. So he looks like a big star. Yanni has a little bit of a congested thing, so he was time enough to stay at home and not tap it, so thank you. Oh. Yeah, yeah.
I better go.
And Melissa, she had surgery and is feeling well, so she's not gonna be here tonight. So thinking about.
Did you see that?
Yes, I saw that, so no sherry, okay. So we're all here that is supposed to be here. So meeting called to order, you got the recording started. I will go ahead and read the Planning Commission land acknowledgement. We'd like to acknowledge that we are on a traditional land of rich and diverse group of native peoples who have called this area home for more than 10,000 years. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the descendants of these native peoples who are still here today. Do everybody get a chance to take a peek at the agenda? If there aren't any issues with it, somebody wanna make a motion to approve the agenda?
Approved as published.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Favor?
I.
Okay, approved, okay, and then how about the meeting minutes? Everybody get a chance, I know Maddie, you and I were gone, I believe you were gonna listen to the recording.
I did, and I looked at the meeting minutes, and so I made a motion to approve my meeting.
Awesome, okay. Second, all, any discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
All right.
Okay. We're just cruising through this. Okay, so meeting dates, we know this group here, we have our next meeting date is November 12th. Is there any issues with that date?
There was another meeting, it sounds like you guys were trying to come up.
Yeah, I think we'll. But then, just November 12th, any issues? No.
Possibly, but I don't know for certain for a week or so.
Okay. I'm hoping I'm gonna be whisked away, it's my wedding anniversary, but probably not, so it's you guys. So it sounds like we'll have a full house.
Actually, I will probably miss.
You will miss.
Flight that you planned.
Okay. So Stan, possibly David. Big possibility on that. So then you wanna talk about the city council meeting?
Yes, thank you. The comprehensive plan been transmitted to city councils September 26th. The review will start in an electronic form and a big binder along with a cover letter and then annotated memo. We didn't add the glossary yet, so we're gonna augment that. Through the deputy mayor, they came up with a draft. A series of meetings building on existing work sessions and existing council meetings. That was circulated and balanced with their ongoing work with the budget, so they have a lot on their hands. They, they, they have found acceptable at this point. Those review dates through December 2nd and a likely public hearing at city council on December 2nd with a possibility of adoption on December 12th, so a lot of work between now and then. What, what isn't included right now is what we discussed prior about a joint planning commission city council session, possibly on Saturday. That doesn't mean we won't, it's just not currently included in the anticipated calendar. We had a switch over at SCJ Christina, but she's still with us through a separate contract between the cities. Through December to help us at city council with that comprehensive plan review. So that's now in place. The item tonight is separate, even though it's SCJ. So as of right now, that schedule is set through December at city council. And we'll start this Thursday night at the 6:00 PM work session with housing. And then flex from there. So that's where we stand on that. Any comments or do you?
So that Saturday is still a possibility?
Yes, it was discussed in prior meetings, discussed in the planning commission, dates floated around, then we had the situation with the consultants, and during that time with the budget discussions and everything else that's coming. Their schedules and anticipating the holidays and your schedules, right now it's out.
It's out.
And what date was that again?
Obviously, the middle of October, wasn't it?
Yeah.
October, like it was coming up soon.
It was mid-October on Saturday and then late October on, right there. But those dates went by the way, so.
We're not pushing for extra meetings, just wanna make sure.
I certainly am not, so they have an anticipated schedule at council that could get reviewed done.
But we're still trying to have that meeting?
Not at this minute.
Okay, like it's had a doodle poll out for us if we wanted to just check my days on Saturdays.
Yeah, I, my suggestion is let's get through this Thursday night with housing. See what that balance between budget and everything else is going to see how the, the full council feels and then go from there.
How does that work if, so let's say we don't do the meeting, but then the council has questions? Then, then is that? What do they do, do they reach out to us?
Exactly, ideally Christina is framing them, receiving them. The first set is due tomorrow at 8:00 AM. And then having an editable document the whole time. Thursday night focused on housing. So those comments will go through the deputy mayor to Christina and we'll have that kind of working progression. If at any moment they have a specific question or need through the chair or vice chair, we can accommodate coming to a meeting, participating remotely, or just trading emails depending on what the issue is.
So unless we know differently, those questions will be directed to the consultant?
Yeah, it's hard to say without knowing what they are. Or to what degree. In other words, the work is great if everything goes swimmingly and there's clarifications, we can handle that. Through Christina, if there is a check back on equity or something, then the opportunity is to bring in a finding commissioner to represent or be part of that discussion. And then hold open the opportunity for both bodies to meet if it's at that high level, what are we doing?
So just pull our horses and talk.
For this week, yes, yeah. And, and I don't anticipate surprising you Friday with, hey, give me two days in the next four, 48 hours. October is very busy. Well, we have a plan to get through October with the existing dates and resources we have. And then November becomes the opportunity.
Pretty good on that.
Yeah.
And, and we have a city council liaison report coming up later in the agenda if you want to.
Okay.
Dive in further.
Great, and we have a new friend online, but well, I guess, wait, did she get?
It's always with SCJ for mental housing, yeah.
Perfect, okay, well, wait just a second there, do you wanna talk about the other item we had too, which was the climate policy advisory schedule?
I do, I was hoping, there, there's three members of the planning commission that are on this climate element task force. Three members of the climate action committee, one member of the tree board. The city council in September approved the contract with Cascadia. Well, and everything blends together. Last Friday, we had our initial kickoff, internal staff to staff. I shared the dates that were solidified for budget, complan, and everything else between now and January with Cascadia. I was hoping yesterday or today that doodle poll would come out to the seven climate policy advisory team members. And they would choose an initial date. Pretty, pretty straightforward, elect a chair, vice chair, ground rules, expectations, here we go. I haven't seen it yet, but I'm hoping for tomorrow.
Who are the seven people?
Yanni, Lois, and David. And, and I'm stretching my memory from C, CAC. Anna, Anne, Saint Heather, Anna, Udelay.
Sarah.
Get out of here.
Who's that, like, Victoria, Stacy, and Jessica?
Two alternates, yeah, and then.
Marion.
Yeah, Mary and Virgil. So existing commissions and committees already got it, already into the ground rules. November, December, January, really start working with Cascadia on the two sub elements. And get those going into 2025.
So we don't have any meeting days that we need to discuss?
Not with the planning commission, no. The doodle poll will come out, I'm hoping for the last week of October selection, maybe an hour meeting. So trading the materials for reading outside of a meeting setting. And then focus on setting a November date. Because that's really where the, the work will commence. Cascadia will take the lead, they're the primary. Under their contracts, I'll be in attendance, I'll press go on Zoom. And then help out as needed, but they're really gonna develop the program, the pace timelines. We know what they are, it's the scope. So December, January is the greenhouse gas sub element inventory, things like that that need to take place early and their, their team is set to do so. Keep the that whole task force in form while we're keeping the planning commission informed. Because the tool for the project is the complaint amendment, the 2025 voluntary document amendment, which has to come to the full commission. Get a recommendation, just like the periodic update, and then go to city council. And we have the $500,000 commerce grant. And we have one more visitor, and we'll see what it that has the scope of work. That's reflected in the scope of work approved in the Cascadia contract, and so those will carry through. And Cascadia's test between June with a deliverable for the grant that consists of a review draft of the complan event. And then city council and Cascadia through the summer and fall. So planning commission is anticipated in the spring.
Spring.
So is there a point person for Cascadia now?
There, there is, Gretchen Mueller. Yeah, I keep wanting to pronounce it Mueller, but it's Mueller. But we're in that Gretchen, and then Alexandra Doty is the day to day. And we'll see emails from both them.
Looks like Yanni has his hand raised.
Hey, Yanni.
Hey there, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Great, I was just gonna make just an editorial comment, I've just in my day job, I've worked with both Gretchen and Alexandra on some things in the past, and they're both really solid, they, I think they'll take good care of us, so I'm very optimistic for that team.
Cool, thanks. So we have public hearings on the list here.
Uh, yeah, I just leave it for structure in Zoom.
Okay.
If there's no words after assume NA. Yeah, that keeps the clerk happy.
Great. And we're not accepting online public comments, so. The person.
Do we have any written comments?
Do we have any written?
We have no written comments of any.
Good catch.
Of any sort.
All right, we'll pass it over to our city liaison.
Thank you, good to be here, sorry, I missed you last week. And I got my notes. A lot has happened since all that in the first party. So on September 12th, we received the mayor's, uh, preliminary proposal, uh, biennial budget for and we spent a lot of meetings, uh, both reviewing the revenue projected for the biennium as well as reviewing expenditures projected for each of the department as well as looking at requests from various departments that they make, whether it be municipal court with the additional traffic cameras, there's an additional, so there's a request to have additional staff to help process that. And the same thing with the police department. With the additional cameras, they do come with restricted expenditures. So even though cameras typically go into the general fund, there will be a separate general fund that's dedicated for a certain number of cameras associated with changes of the RCW laws about those monies being spent. They're anticipated to generate about $4 million per year.
Nice.
And the expenditures of those are restricted, they may be spent on the administrative costs of having the cameras. They have to pay to maintain the cameras every month, as well as the processing of the tickets to go with them. Or the court, municipal court, as well as police officers after review. But the council will have to sit down and decide how to spend the remainder of those funds. And they are intended for safety, for, for traffic, for that. Automobile. Needs, so we'll need to sit there and figure out how to spend them, because they will be restricted.
So would it be $4 million is what, that's not including the expenses, right?
That's not including the expenses.
How much do they pay?
Now, the net is bringing neighborhood 2.7 to 3 million per year.
Wow, that's very significant.
But they are restricted, because on the other side, the general fund pays for things like courts, public works, and police. Police are the largest expenditure for the Lake Forest Park. And this comes out of the general fund. And we are projecting a $3 million deficit in the general fund. Now, there are other funds that are used to pay for certain activities in the city, such as sewer, surface water, and roads, they have some cases, they're only difficult funds, so when you pay your sewer bill, portion of that goes considerably for spark. Much of it is going to be counted to process the sewage that goes with it. So they have dedicated sources for certain. But police comes out of. So we are looking at how to address that imbalance. We currently have enough in our reserves to accommodate that $3 million deficit that we have in the general fund over the next biennial, biennial, six. But we do need to consider how we're gonna manage that going forward, because it is increasing deficit. In the last biennium, we have about a $1 million deficit for the two years. Now, certain things accrued, so we actually ended up with the reserves at the end of 2024 projected being more than what we projected when we established your budget two years ago. So that's a positive, some, some of the money is good because we have vacancies. So where you wish you had the staff. The flip side is you grew the reserves because you weren't getting the staff that you wish. So very advantages and disadvantages. So we are looking at a possible levy lift, so we are entering discussions to hire it, it's all to help us identify what the levy lift might be, helping pay for some of the core services that we first run as sent to us. We've also initiated a contract with consulting firm Liz Lewis to do some polling, surveying to understand what the citizens of Lake Forest Park either know about our budget situation or where they might be, if they might want to increase funds to accommodate some of our core services. So that's an important piece to generate before we actually decide what kind of levy lift we wanna do, that will come out. The survey work will be maybe late this fourth quarter or early next, how we make this order. We'll work with the lending consultant to figure out how we might approach your level of that.
No, I mean, we're just so largely single family, I mean, you make a fraction of that 1%, I mean, it's like.
So the 1% turns out to be about $34,000 per year. So it's not a lot of money.
Yeah, I hope there's another proposition that will be put out to vote for, for people to increase that.
So our fund sources are property tax, sales tax, real estate access tax, so when you sell property and he's fairly supporting some of the road. And then we have taxes or fees associated with service water and sewage.
Sounds like we need to get more cameras.
Yeah. Uh, there, there are options to put in a couple more cameras, but they did like the ones that we just recently initiated around Burt's Side, which are 24/7. They are restricted, so the funds for those have to go into travel, safety, administration, they can't go to jail. So there, there are some limitations there.
Would sidewalks fall under that category?
Yes.
So this would let safe streets affect the.
It would effectively, uh, opportunity to fund safe streets. And we want to assess, is that the same priorities that we've established when we developed the organic forest aid trees and the projects that we're doing now, to say, okay, we do wanna stay with that. You may have seen that we signed a purchase and sale, or we authorized the man to sign the purchase and sale for what is known as the first property adjacent by the. So that sale has actually gone further, so that property will refer to the city when it's, gross. Passes away. Oh. We had a presentation on called active transportation, that's primarily street overlay as well as city. We also had a discussion about multi-modal activities or healthy streets, so opportunities, for example, to slow traffic on streets. It might be through signage or placards that says the healthy street slowed down, so that is still in the works. We also heard about a proposal to debt finance, some of the vehicles that we need, for example, for the police department and public works. We have some vehicles that are very older, basically beyond their type of life. Police cars, for example, 100,000 years, vehicles that are much older than that. It's a payoff between maintenance cost and, you know, possibly. And coming up tomorrow, we have more discussion about our biennial budget as well as the Lake Forest Park comprehensive plan. And then in our regularly discussion about whether we should take a position on state initiative 2066 concerning the regular, regulating energy services and bringing natural gas and what issue that we're in discussion. Related, or, 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 this is, this is very discussion about reducing the fees. There are some discussions about that, we have, I think, signed a contract with the Department of Commerce to help us develop the charging purpose.
I just remembered that was taken in the client.
Yeah, Sarah had mentioned that too.
So one of the things we are gonna consider is, how's the technology got to, where will find an average in these cars? They're very special, I'll just.
I mean, you guys buy them secondhand, don't you?
These cars?
It is like for far.
We buy them.
Oh, you do?
Yes, because their useful life is only about six years, 100,000.
Yeah.
So anybody use one. And they're very expensive, totally outfit, this car is about $80,000 per year. It's about $40,000 for the car and then another $40,000.
Pretty happy.
Are there any updates on an associate planner? Or is that still?
Senior planner?
Sure, yes, senior planner.
We have a conditional offer, qualified person needs to relook. Working towards a final offer. And a start date. And building this.
And as part of our budget process, it's not an arranged proposal, but there's discussion about.
You have any questions? About middle housing?
9A and middle housing. The, the third number one priority effort. So, uh, for the recording, basic background, we're, we're nearing completion of review of our required periodic update of all the elements, policy level document comprehensive plan. The goal of December adoption to meet the growth management act deadline. We have the commerce grant to do the climate element four years in advance. The contract's in place, that'll last through 2025. A more timeline sensitive issue is that third effort, it's the development regulations around some of the, the already work that's already happened, but we injected policy into the complan. Now, the development regulations that apply to specific project proposals of property are the tasks that we're starting tonight. The time sensitivity is that that can't just be in draft form of the recommendation and hand it off to city council in June and see where we, we get 2025, because on in theory, July 1st, 2025. If we haven't adopted local regulations, we are subject to a model ordinance adopted, put in place by Department of Commerce. Which is meant to address all the issues for similar cities. We've been offered that this effort should take precedence, put local development regulations in place and have them adopted by June of 2025, so we are not subject to the model ordinance. A lot of the policy level work has been done. You've spent a year with visioning, a year with the policy. You understand the housing needs assessment and so forth, the growth targets. How with those policy changes and these development codes, what are we trying to address? And so you've seen a table from staff and Lila that shows the, the planning period through 2044, the growth target of 870 units of various types. If if nothing is done at the policy level and development regulation level, and we go with the standards we have in place right now. Most of that growth target will be met. But not all of it. So there is work to be done with middle housing, done the policy work. Now, the discussion of housing types, development regulations, what is appropriate for the community of Lake Forest Park in balance with other high priorities on critical areas. Shoreline. And find a way to address about 275 units of growth target is not, that is not accounted for in our addition, our existing policy and regulations. We have the capacity to provide more than 1,000. In addition, so it's not a capacity issue. But the task at hand is how will we address the middle housing mandates in our development code adopted by ordinance by June 2025? And tonight is just meant to be a kickoff, meet new staff, get a general presentation, have a discussion on what may be needed, what you'd like to see. And getting going, you would inform SCJ as they marshal their staff in and begin that process. Hope that gives that umbrella over you. You have a conveyor system.
That's great, thank you.
Let us go and procedural question, maybe it's to Zoe, but as we move through this, will the middle housing code recommendations that we make be, how will those impact our single family housing code? Like, what's the connection between the two? Like, if we, if we reduce or increase setbacks, you know, to one, do we have to, do we have to do for one what we do for the other?
So I actually have a PowerPoint that has a point on that exact bit. And I will state that per the state legislation that passed, they want single family and middle housing to be treated similarly together with that, and that middle housing development code cannot be more restrictive than single family.
Great. Okay, thank you.
And then other events have happened in addition to the complan, we had the community housing forum. And with the complan workshop. And trying to maximize outreach so that it would benefit this effort, a lot of the technical aspects. Difference between an eight foot and a 10 foot side yard setback. Difference between an eight foot and a ten foot side yard setback. Is not going to come from staff, but would be. Relay to you so that you understand the mechanics of what it may mean. One of the primary items of feedback we've been getting is what this effort is not. It is not an effort to take a single family bulk. On a single family lot, multiply it by three, low down the critical areas, all of good. Bulk and mass stays that single family. But then generally what consists of ADUs duplex, triplex, even cottage in that bulk of mass and preservation of beneficial areas.
I think last we discussed about limiting this to a couple zones. I want to say it's R seven two hundred, RS seven two hundred. Or the previously known RS seven two hundred. And RS fifteen thousand. Is that still in the works? Or are we now looking at, well, because I thought during the conflict process, we get zero that. I don't know if anybody else.
We're heading towards that, but the important part about this effort is the discussion. How, you know, and discuss it broad.
Step back.
Exactly. What is middle housing? What is appropriate? What? And then narrow into what is appropriate for Lake Forest Park? But the discussion has to happen, including housing types of six, seven, eight types, some of which may not be appropriate for him.
Okay, so we're really zeroing back again.
Yeah.
Earlier. So we don't even know if it's going to be a true ordinance or an amendment to this in code.
Well, the the policy in theory is captured in this periodic update. The development regulations will be in ordinance in our municipal code. So that's the goal. We have an additional advantage. I don't know if you read the article this weekend in shoreline news about our conflict being like. At the cold staff, we have a unique opportunity that whatever, and I see Yanni as a question. Whatever policy we have not incorporated into the periodic update. But that may rise later and need amending, adding, or we just got it wrong, take it away. All those get lumped into the climate element amendment. You can do one amendment, but it could be a hundred things. And so that's our second opportunity to make sure we got housing policy right. If we did, and it's in the conflict right now and it's adopted, all we're doing is development regulations. Municipal code. Thanks. That's the primary difference between the last year.
So basically. They they Oliver didn't call you for. It read like he did it.
Yes.
Yanni.
You had two questions. Just to clarify, though, there are, there's the minimum of allowing two units that will apply everywhere. Right? So I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah. So some of the other housing types, we talked about zones, but. State law is going to tell us that we need to allow to in our single family zones. So. Okay, so I've remembered that, right? The other question, and I think I know the answer here, but there are some other aspects of our current development code. Very much related to housing and density and things, maybe not explicitly about middle housing, but I'm assuming, Mark, that. If we know of some things we want to address, we we can lump those in as well. Or work on them if we, you know. Want to.
There there will be one ordinance. We have to be mindful of the timeline, the deadline for the model ordinance. But that opportunity is there and we can start it by talking broad. We're primarily trying to meet the mandates of three pieces of legislation. In various sessions. I'll get the numbers wrong. Twelve twenty thirteen thirty seven and eleven ten. So we'll at least do that. A lot of the first two are accessory dwelling units, ETS accessory dwelling. So we will look at that. Middle housing in House 1110 looks at more types to play a complex, complex. So we'll do all that. If we run into an inconsistency or just some other. Fix it issue. That can be in this ordinance as long as it doesn't sidetrack us from June.
Okay, just for the record, it's one I've brought up before, and I think I had it in some of the comments in our in our draft comp plan. The one I'm thinking about specifically is the kind of goofy frontage requirement we have on lots in the RS. What twenty and fifteen and ten thousand? Which requires a certain amount of public street frontage to make a lot, which basically it's an, it was an artificial tool to keep even the biggest lots from subdividing even to what the zoning allows. I think it's a, it's a. I'd like us to talk about that, but I'll I'll stop there. But I think we should talk about that because it's. There's an agenda behind it from way back, and it's totally inconsistent with this idea that we need to have some more housing and housing types. Thanks.
On the back burner, right? Or on the burn? Maybe not back.
I would offer it's on the burner because it's part of that discussion we're going to have anyway.
Right.
But if it gets us sidetracked into numbers and away from the house bill mandates.
Right. But shouldn't we be talking about procedure first? Like, I'd like to know, like, what the consultant's thinking in terms of how we're going to approach this? What are the big questions?
And you mean asking tonight back there?
Tonight. Yeah, yes.
Love for us though to come back to it so that we can have a proper discussion, but I agree. I think it would be good to hear from Zoe now, but I have.
Other thoughts?
Yeah, thoughts on that.
Maybe we can carve out fifteen minutes of community to just throw out all the ideas. Sorry, Zoe.
Okay, awesome. I do have a PowerPoint that's prepped and actually was addressing the legislation that was stated earlier. So part of me was just like, oh, I should share my screen already, but I'll do the formalities and let's hope that my screen sharing will work correctly. This is always the struggle with this. I know it's a blank screen right now, so hopefully. From the beginning, can folks see it? Yay, awesome, perfect. So, hi, everybody. Zoe Taper. My name sometimes looks like Tapper, but it's tape. Um, we'll be talking about middle housing today. So I know that the SCJ Alliance team helped with the comp plan as well. I was actually pulled in near the final bits, just as extra hands to help review some things real quick. But for the middle housing update specifically, it'll be a project team of Kirsten Peterson, who unfortunately could not make it tonight. Myself as a planner doing production work, really getting into the nitty bitty details of the code as well as Sharifa, who's really great with our development regulations as well as showing, as well as showing the visual side of codes and everything. For background on myself, I am from Woodby Island originally. I saw a kiddo earlier in the room, and I want to say that I was brought to Parks Commission and Port Commission meetings at a young age. And my parents are pretty sure that's why I'm in planning now. I joked and went the environmental nonprofit route for a period of time, but found that I loved policy and got my degree in environmental ethics and policy, and then later got my master's in community and regional planning. Joined SCJ and have been loving just this nitty gritty policy work ever since, especially with code. So happy to be here and thank you all for having us. The state legislation refresher, this is the three bits here. Now HB eleven ten is kind of lumped with this amendment that happened in the last legislative session. That was HB twenty three twenty one. It just changed a little bit of the language. It's still the same idea of requiring an allowance of different middle housing types based on a city's population. And that these regulations need to conform to requirements within six months after a city's periodic update due date. HB twelve twenty was the amendment to the housing element within the GMA, and that was accounting for the income bands and identifying and addressing local policies that result in racially disparate impacts. And then thirteen thirty seven is the ADU bill as discussed, and this is one that doesn't deal with population size in the same way that eleven ten does and those middle housing areas. As a middle housing refresher, these are the nine middle housing types on the right that the that Commerce has given folks to choose from. It's basically any sort of building that is compatible in scale, form and character to single family, but is more than a single residence. So it's two or more, and it can come in a variety of different shapes, designs, sizes. And that cities really have to allow for different types based on their population size. And again, that middle housing regulations cannot be more restrictive than for those attached, for detached, single family residences. The population size component that I keep mentioning has to do with the tier system for cities, so it's going to vary across the board. Of course, Seattle's going to handle middle housing in a different way than shoreline versus Lake Forest Park. And here at Lake Forest Park, we're dealing with that cities must permit at least two homes per residential lot. And that's like the bare minimum of what needs to be done here. So. As of like this summer in July, the ordinance actually changed. It used to be that for tier three cities, you had to do at least four of the nine middle housing types, and right now it is at least duplexes. So that's a major change there. Instead of having to select from that whole list of like the different types, it's at least duplexes and you can do other types depending on the community. Did also do some digging in preparation for this meeting. I know I wasn't involved in the public engagement that we helped with during the comp plan, but I wanted to refresh some of the results that were done because there is a deliberate effort done to also understand what middle housing types folks in the community wanted to see. And the top three were cottage court, then ADUs and duplex. We really have to do ADUs and duplexes based on thirteen thirty seven and the middle housing legislation alone. So I would say a conversation then is around the cottage court, which the wording of which in the engagement was a group of six or so, a group of six or so small detached house scaled buildings typically up to one and a half stories in height arranged in a courtyard. And that's actually kind of a bit of a blend between courtyard apartments and cottage housing. Because courtyard apartments are attached together in a courtyard shape. But that can be addressed however we would want to, if that's still the way folks want to go. And then the least popular were tiny house villages, multiplex apartments, and then micro apartment buildings. Our approach for adjusting development regulations for this is to really start with identifying the gaps in current code of just what needs to be addressed based on the state model ordinance alone and work with identifying gaps, updating definitions. This is stuff we have to do anyway. Then utilizing visuals to help describe different regulations, get more into the customization of updating design standards and work off of that to have an edited version that folks feel good with. So that next step would be the gap analysis, which looks a little like this in draft form, where we do a comprehensive review of the current existing development code, highlighting areas where changes are needed, yes, possibly, no. Have recommendations associated with it, notes, hand that off all to you all for review. And then go about making those changes, customization to it, and moving forward from there. But that is really what I had prepped for you all. Of course, I'm open to a conversation and can answer any sort of questions you have. Let me stop the share. That's my little spiel.
So.
Oh, no. Are there any local cities that have already passed or have have advanced in their development of their ordinance or?
There are. I have not been involved in those projects necessarily. But there are some that have gone about it because other cities did receive grants to do this earlier. Don't have a list off the top of my head, but we can look at those.
Is it Tom? I mean, Tom Waters listed here.
Tom Waters there as a like a work in progress where we're at now. Yes. So that's a city we're currently working with.
Oh, a question, or were you done? Sam, I think you were next, right?
Well, I was just going to ask if you have or will be sharing kind of a post timeline of like our work plan, like what should we be doing each month and to be set to pass by end of June and leaving the council enough time to consider whatever we propose and have public hearing and the rest of it.
Yes.
Absolutely.
You will or you already have that?
We already have it in the sense of the fifty thousand dollar grant and deliverables in that scope. We have it with the contract amendment through SCJ in that scope. Then we had periodic update to city council, a little transition and staff introduction tonight, and then circle back to what that timeline is, but we already know November, December, January are key.
Right. Because I think what we're asked, sorry. Yeah, I think what we're asking, Bill, is what's the timeline for this committee, right? You're talking about big picture.
Yeah.
But I I think it would be useful, like you said.
To know what we need to accomplish in each meeting.
Yeah.
Also, then I think, you know, if there's any areas where we can find some extra space, it sounds like this group, like we have a couple of things that we want to add in too. So if we can visually see like where we're at, what we need to do, and if we can build some room in for this group to discuss.
I'm hoping for the regular meetings through the winter and leaving it to SCJ. And their new staff manager. Just that all finalize it, get and get what they need. They'll do the brown the word and hopefully use your regular meetings. And then work with them to make sure I count back from June and council meetings, three touches so that we can have a draft ordinance and app that we do environmental review. Sixty day later to Commerce and Council. So I know that I can't do months back. April, May, June is that period. So if we address that. Question with SCJ and they come forward with what they need and when and inform you, and hopefully that's regular meetings. It takes us through February, March. That is the overall picture. We just don't have it.
So it sounds like SAG will, SJC will develop a timeline of work, of work timeline for the planning.
Yes, that's in progress to develop a timeline that works with this group and what we'd be bringing for you all and vice versa.
Yeah. And I have one comment. First comment, based on your last meeting, you talked about like having a Saturday session or whatever. I'm thinking it might take like a workshop environment where we can chew on things together because I think there have been so many really great ideas that have been sort of incidentally, you know, thrown out that we may need some space to actually just have wild ideas, you know, and away from the consultant, you know, so that we can just talk amongst ourselves and plan just as an idea. Zoe, you're smiling.
Yeah. Yeah, I I think that's great.
Yeah, just to take everything we're learning from you and then have some brainstorming sessions and then come back to you with some organized questions versus just sort of ad hoc.
Perfect. No, that works with us.
Okay, two questions. One, back to my original question. I think what I was asking, and I knew we couldn't have something more restrictive for like duplexes and single family houses. But I was asking in the other way, like if we say, you know, okay, so a duplex, if you're building a duplex, you're allowed this perceived benefit that you don't get when you have a single family house. So do we have to allow single family homes to have all the same benefits of a duplex?
I don't think so, actually. I don't think there's a restriction in that. It's like you have to treat them fully the same. Like, I think you could do more incentives for middle housing. I haven't actually seen that come up, though. I would not see anybody having an issue with it, though.
Yeah, I I just wondered if we have to treat duplexes the same as single family houses will single family houses say, you know. Not that single family houses talk, but you know what I'm saying? Like.
Yeah.
Anyway, the other is kind of a use case. What's not clear in the lot of me is if you're building a duplex on a property here in Lake Forest Park, are you still allowed the VATU and an ADU? So in effect, you could build six units on a property? the D A D U and an A D U? So in effect, you could build six units on a property? Or what's the intersection between the A D U law and the duplex, the middle housing?
So, yes, you, in theory, and I'm gonna say in theory right now, not taking into consideration like critical area, septic capacity, I mean sewer connection lines, any other thing, fire code, all of that other side. In theory, you can have a duplex building and ADUs. In theory, how the capacity and other demands on a system work with that would vary through development. So I I see your point. I also know that's not like a a great answer, cuz.
The bottom of, because when we updated our A D U code, I don't know, uh, two years ago. We uh wrote in our, our current code says you can have a D A D U and an A D U. It's got some floor area restrictions and so forth and setbacks. But under current uh, under our curtain uh building code, you can't have two and to the point where we can't be more restrictive of middle housing than single family housing. I mean, I guess theoretically, uh, each duplex could then build two units, which would amount to six units on a property. And so I just, I think it's some, it's gonna be something that we have to resolve and understand so that we're aware of implications of all of the other aspects that we have a clear picture.
Yeah, that's where it gets into the specifics a bit on the lot sizes. Because yes, like with it being treated the same as single family, you would be able to do do, I mean, to do ADUs in that way. Um, it it gets messy with the review. Um, that's just my comment there of, I'll have to do a bit more digging on it. But you could have those six units on a lot.
Unless.
In certain cases.
Change the legacy A D U code that was updated a couple of years.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think, I think we'll have to know that. And then can I ask one more question? Um, it looked like in the slides that you just showed that there were some guidelines on citing of D A D U's where it looked like real specific egress was required to the D A D U. And I don't think that's in our current code. And so are there some specific mandates that we should be aware of with regard to access to the A D Us? That will need to update in our code.
I believe, okay, wait, let me share my screen again on this. Um, was it on this slide here with the visuals or was it?
The image on the top left, you see the, it's.
Yeah, this one. This was meant as more of an example of what we can produce for showing the, just showing code in general for you all of different scenarios for how code turns into the visual aspect. Um, when it comes to the requirements on these, there are certain guidelines to make sure that we're following. Part of that for middle housing is in the ordinances. And then for thirteen thirty seven, there's language there as well that I personally have not messed around too much with yet. Uh, but we will be reviewing as part of this.
And I'm asking that question just to the rest of you, uh, because one of the things we learned was that there were, there was interest at the legislative level to be able to sell a D A D U. And that legislation didn't pass, but the thought was that that might be farther going along. And I don't know if that creates a challenge. So I'm just thinking, if if that's the way you know, the legislation goes, are 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 we gonna need to update our A D U code to acknowledge that it is suitable for that type of usage? So I don't have all the words to explain my thinking properly as much as to say, how can we anticipate future?
So I think that's a really good point. I think that we, so I'm wondering, you know, we're already starting to have this conversation, but how are we gonna track those questions? Right? How do we make sure that we come back to those questions? Because I'm concerned about given, you know, like with the comp plan, we just got so many data information that I think we, I think we left some things out. So what's the process of collecting that, those questions?
I was gonna say, I am taking notes at this moment on my little notepad over here. Um, and I can type things up for everybody. Uh, but having any sort of running list I think is helpful to make sure that we capture the ideas and nothing gets lost in the process.
Rely on you for, because sometimes our consistency with members in and out, you you know, can get lost. So can, are you something that can own that or do you need us to do that?
I would feel better with you all owning it, one of the members in the room having uh, a tracking of notes. I mean, we can share on our end, but I could not necessarily say if I'm gonna always be a bit available to attend these meetings. Is part of the thing. I know Kirsten might step in more than myself.
That would be great.
Yeah, uh, uh, just like, just like the annotated, I would suggest get your comments and questions as you get them. Filter them through the chair and vice chair, and then we'll build that running list.
Is that something that's better for you to do so they have administrative control over the?
No, I don't have the bandwidth.
Okay.
I can bring my, I can volunteer to start, make a clearinghouse if you guys want that way. Does that, I'll start bringing my computer.
I just wanna make sure they exist without detracting from cop land, climate element, or any two other projects.
Um, because I think that's a good question, but I, you know, I don't know. I think it's important to look at the D A D U code so that there is consistency and I don't know who's. Uh, it seems to me S J C that would be within their wheelhouse, but again, I don't.
The the gap analysis and what's in there right now.
Correct.
Will happen. And then A D Us and uh a review of twelve twenty and thirteen thirty seven. I've been preoccupied for this year. I'm convinced that in those house bills, you can sell an A D U. I know that you don't have, have to have it owner occupied anymore. And so we'll meet those mandates, whatever they are, talk about everything else. But it may be that you didn't watch subdivision and support some table right now.
There was some term.
Sorry, yeah.
No, I'm sorry. I was, Maddie, I was trying to get some clarification on terminology. You were using the acronym D A D. What is D A?
Detached accessory. So our current code allows one attached accessory to a community within your structure and one.
Detached.
Detached, right, um. So.
We did so much more comments.
We did. And I, I think too, and I'll just, I'll just type my questions in here and then pass it out to you guys. And if everyone wants to add theirs, and we could put it in the meeting notes uh for public access, but.
Can we just have one person be the clearinghouse? That way, if if S, do you wanna be the clearinghouse? We can send.
That or like I said, I was just gonna do little sheets and then everybody has.
Oh, perfect, yeah, and so people can type their own.
Um, so I'm curious about uh process. I mean, whether to us or to to Zoe, as we entertain a a lot of the ideas that we kicked around. And you know, should we allow in certain zones, you know, this type of housing versus that type of housing? What process will use to sort of play out the um to test our ideas, you know, like what, what might this, what might the impacts be environmentally? What might the impacts be in terms of uh access or fire code or like all of the things? So it's not just, we don't get just enamored with the housing idea without thinking about what the downstream impacts are of that kind of housing. You know, on a, on a.
Unintended consequences.
Unintended consequences, we said it more. Yeah, what process will we use to to try to weigh down into the consequences? As a, for example, our current code allows uh of somebody who's developing a lot to be, they have to be a total of fifteen feet, the side yard setback. It can be as close as five feet on one side, which is pretty close when you think about trying to like paint or do siding projects or whatever. But um, without touching that, uh, we don't have anything that limits any step back for second floors or limits the linear feet. You could run along somebody's uh fence line, and I highly encourage you all to drive down to Grace Cole, and just before you get to Grace Cole, there's a house on the right that sold this lot that was in back, they had three parcels. They sold it back and the person built a house that runs the length of their fence in order to preserve a ginormous yard for themselves on the other side. And it's the sheer wall that comes up and moves over this other house because they weren't restricted on the linear feet nor did they have to do setbacks and all during construction because they couldn't build the house on five feet of property. They just wrecked the the person's, you know, landscape. Unintended consequence of a five foot setback. Um, so I would love for us to think about how we might test our ideas so we don't just get swept up with the housing idea and not think about, about my layout.
Uh, uh, staff can offer two categories to focus on so that the whole burden is not everywhere. Trees and critical areas. You know what the code is, how to implement it, it drew for trees, let me for critical areas. The intent is to meet the mandates, provide mental housing, P D U's and so forth, and whatever the community chooses. But not negatively affect trees and critical areas. So we can take those two lenses and ensure uh the conversation doesn't have unintended consequences for this.
One of, one of the concerns I have for unintended consequences actually with this stuff, with all this is um, we don't have enough. We're, we're struggling for planning service, like the civil services for the city to pay for this. And nowhere is our discussion as to if we're gonna add more density, then there's gonna be more need for policing, for planning, for public works, sewage, and that, that there's a gap there that I would like also to kinda, kinda think about that has me concerned.
So let you go on a Google list.
On a Google list, yeah.
And we may already have information and past efforts that address that, the capacity and show those exhibits. But uh have that conversation.
Yeah, I I feel very strongly that we can't look at that in isolation. It's kind of the frustrating thing about this legislation for a city of our nature. You know, where we are self funding strapped, um, but we're about to exasperate even further with this legislation. More of those services and and it's, yeah, anyways, just wanted to raise that also, was unintended consequences.
And so I guess that raises a, I'm sorry.
Oh, I was just saying, that's a good point.
It raises a question because it's a great point for us. And as we're having these conversations and discussions, I think who would be on point then to kind of inform us like the parameters of this legislation? Because I thought I remembered something in one of the bills that even said like, you can't in accommodating this middle housing. You know, put any sort of burden on the people who wanna develop it to support increases in infrastructure, even if it's putting a strain on the infrastructure.
Yeah, I mean, fiscally, it's just, you know, on the one hand, we're so constrained by this, but on the other hand, you know, we're financially unable to support more of this load.
So as what we're discussing and coming up with ideas, Zoe, would that be you to kind of help keep us true to what the law requires and where limits are? Okay.
Absolutely, yeah. And I will, will make a note that this is something I've even kind of needed to get more into the weeds of in seeing how it plays out in other folks' example of the regulation. But there is a part of H B eleven ten and in the amendment that was made in twenty three twenty one where it says that yes, middle housing and single family are to be treated similarly. Uh, the exception being critical areas. So that is an area that they have separated out to avoid any impacts there. The specifics of that, I'm still diving into understanding in what cases, but there is legislation writing there.
Yeah, because I'd like to see an example. I would definitely like to see an example of it, that being pushed, right? The uh, when a critical earnings comes into play, what's happening?
I feel like the city of Normandy Park, the city of Des Moines, these are all kind of profile cities that are similar. Not only with a lot of critical areas, but largely single family, under twenty five thousand. I'd be curious to see if they, where they've gotten in terms of model ordinance.
And those, I think that you've touched on something just a few seconds ago as well as like, you know, we have kind of we have two goals, right? One is middle housing. We know we gotta do that. You know, people need to live someplace. We also have an environment, you know, the city of Lake Forest Park, it's citizens really appreciate the the quality life that we have here with trees and the, and the uh, you know, that we're protecting the canopy. But at what point does that contradict to the, to those goals? Contradict one another? What do we do if it does contradict?
Other questions. Uh, what is, what happens with uh lots completely covered by critical areas? What would reasonable use be?
Now, that the, the next agenda item gives that option. Will we, will we be looking at all existing codes part of this effort with a middle housing code? Yes.
Yeah.
Will our U E's come up?
Yes.
But we also have a timeline. And so the next uh item or the next agenda item is a laundry list of potential topics to address in twenty twenty five. And it may be that the R U E reload is good enough for middle housing. But is on a side burner for twenty twenty five to be relooked at entirely. So that discussion we could have.
I guess the, my underlying question there though is what we're, what does the state say about R U E's given all of this, these new housing laws? And what, what per view does our city have to determine what that is? So that we don't discourage middle housing, but actually maybe use a a reasonable use exception to encourage two really small units versus a larger.
And that'll come down to the language, which hasn't changed. If the language is um prevents all economic benefit. An argument can be made, our R U E standards as is, is sufficient. A single family home of some size through the R U E process is economic benefit. Could the property owner then argue, well, my neighbor gets two detached A D U's that they sold and are duplex? And they have a apartment of a, a cottage housing next door. Why can't I get that as a minimum developer right? That's where the, the language comes in. We wanna avoid takings. We don't wanna buy all the critical areas in the city. But all the, the language about deprivation of all economic benefits is key. Some cities don't have that, and it is an average comparison of of vicinity and what those developments have. And as those go to duplexes, they're gonna have to reexamine that. Because if a minimum developer right then becomes duplex to A D U's. And that goes to hearing examiner, and that's where our language is, then yes, that's the minimum. Our language right now does not say that. It's pretty strong. But will definitely be relooked at, because I know in the end, on July fourth, when we get applications, I'll need to implement the code. And if that question comes in with a building permit application, I'll need an answer. Um, you know, what constitutes that minimum development right in our code on that day? That'll be important.
That, that's a good perspective. So what is it that you need to answer come July?
Yeah, and it may be that no change is needed, um, or that it's sideburnered for a complete relook on how it's working. We'll, we'll know what the existing language is, we'll have an opinion, we have access to, to Kim Pratt uh for advice, frame a recommendation, and then continue that discussion of R U E's being high up there in this process. They can't, I would offer they can't be prevented, or you're gonna lose a court. You're going to be buying these properties and paying for the development you're not allowing. So a minimum developer right and an R U E are for tools, but then decide locally what that consists of. Make it legal advice.
Maddie, I have a trick for your question, not to, just to go back to your question. How can we use our U E to our advantage?
I mean, I think all of, I, my, my biggest worry is that all this middle housing is gonna just create a full up expensive housing. Now, if people are underland, my land is very expensive. It's, it's just, it's the nature of what's been created. And the, the cost of the land makes building middle housing, I think, pretty complicated. And my biggest fears, all of this is not gonna achieve, well, creating a house, which is not a lot of this, which housing and all of these. So I'm super interested in how we might all work together and figure out, what are the rights? I'm super interested in how we might all work together and figure out, what are the rights sort of incentives, the things that would service that right to big point? To have somebody think like, oh, yeah, I'd rather build this than that. So. I mean, it's maybe a workshop where we can talk more freely and um. About those ideas.
I think that's the dilemma between cities and developers, we can't control. You know, what a developer decides and propose, like an owner of that property, that's really. Up to them, and there's no, yeah, unless we put like design ordinances or that sort of thing. But yeah, it's darn near impossible to control that.
Right, but we, I I think between all of us, we might find some mechanisms to incentivize, that's like, I guess that was my point, it's like. Yeah, we can't control it, so the only way we can control it maybe is by incentivizing it, so what, what are those incentives like?
I I think that's key, because middle housing is not subsidizing.
Right.
Market rate. But it's meant to give variety of housing types that are missing. There's the keyword. So that the market has more options at various income levels. Um but it's not intended to be subsidized, rent controlled. Incentivized with density bonuses on the lower end, that's not. There, you spoke words.
I will say, I go back to sidewalks, uh we live in a park, it is, if you go out at any given day, you'll see the number of people walking. And having to negotiate around those cars. But if we could have a connected thoroughfare, um we are essentially, to answer your question, we live in a park and and. To actually offer our our residents an ability to actually walk this park. Is is truly um a special thing, and um. So anyways, I I think my answer is again, how do we tie in that that, you know, the conflict? We can have middle housing, um people want to walk, uh we need to promote, I think. The sidewalks, I'm looking forward to the council's work, um being able to constantly push that. Uh without residents not having to negotiate that, that we live in a park and that. Yeah, it's exciting to to be able to walk to uh a place where we can get coffee, right now, there's only one in my local one or four. But I'm still hoping to for, you know, for more diverse uses or walkability, but. That really is, um you know, I think maintaining an incentive to maintain the trees, the canopy for all residents, because again, it is. We're living in a park.
There any other items for middle housing? Or for our new leader Zoe?
I uh, we we had an internal meeting last week to kick this off like everything else. Tonight is just an introduction, and we all are aware we need to hit the ground running. I'm going to create a library. I've read Houseville eleven ten so many times during the session, after the session, the cleanup bill. I couldn't tell you what's really in there. And which version I'm remembering, but uh my goal is to create a library of those things. So that they are available to you and take it up upon staff to verify that they're the most relevant. That are part of this effort, so I'll I'll take that on as we go to November. And the SCJ staff guy couldn't be here tonight, is anticipated to be involved on November twelve. And a lot of the background work and factual information doesn't need to happen in a meeting preparation. And that we preserve the the meeting time for discussion. People will start developing that.
So next time we'll have, I think we'll have a timeline, is that is is that my understanding and uh some clarity on the House Bill though too, especially. It sounds like it's a constant leading target, that was, that's been our struggle as a group is is also trying to keep up with the changes, yeah.
And planners, at some point, you've got to give up. Right, that they passed it, some things made it in, some things didn't. Some things overlap with transit oriented developments that was gonna come back the next session. Then you read it, and then you do the model orders with commerce, you think you understand, but. But you keep hearing this, hey, they're gonna do a cleanup bill, so don't take it as given, then they do a cleanup bill. After stuff they intended to clean up, did it get done? But some did, and so for a tier three city with duplex, that really helped. The conflict in that regard was, we need to adopt six types, but we only need to allow the densities for two. You know, where does that leave implementation, so they they clean that up as best possible? And then the next session comes and. See where it goes from. But right now, I can't convey enough, if if we've achieved one thing tonight, I'd be happy with. Some sense that we don't want to be subject to model ordinance. Everything kind of derives from there. It's it's not intended to be this big bad thing, it's just not appropriate for this, a city this size. With critical areas and shoreline and so forth, it doesn't incorporate that. Just doesn't.
Hundred percent.
Yeah. So I think, I think it's that, this is cheap tonight, we get the timeline. Uh I hope we have a court on November twelve. But we'll share all the materials leading up to that, so whoever's can't make it then, we still. Anyway. So so we'll quickly expect this idea of a workshop. Was all to be together, talk about. Yeah, just amongst ourselves, um are we thinking that would be after our next November meeting?
Probably once we see their um schedule. And you have to go get kids, right?
So you guys, obviously, Yanni, are you able to take take control? I I don't know if you're here when I explain, I could take uh relieve the babysitter.
Uh, yeah, gotcha.
Okay, um I I mean, I think before, as you guys transition in the next section of. Of all the brainstorming that we had, obviously, we have a really full agenda, and maybe some of those items will. Our later, what we're working on, but I think one of the last things that we left off was um. There's any guidance from city council, I think you're maybe gonna bring it up the last time you guys connected, not that you didn't have anything to talk about, but. If there was any additional direction. Or ideas that you wanted us to kind of kick around, but if not, we have a pretty healthy list. Already on the agenda for us to talk through.
I don't have anything to offer you tonight.
Yeah, that's just fine. That's just fine, um drinks. So if you guys want to talk about that, I will just listen to the rest of the recording and see what direction we might want to go, but. Between now and June, we have pretty, pretty full time, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, you guys, sorry.
Can you do those? No, we're catching up on fast minutes, you can take them with you for a moment. Get that anytime.
Bye, Ashton.
Okay, um didn't expect to share from the screen, but I'll do my best and uh. Here we go, um do we have more we need to to cover with S SCJ uh tonight, or are we gonna move on to our next bits?
I think we're good, yeah.
Okay, on that point, would folks like me to stay around in case any questions come up or? Pop off? Any preference?
I mean, I think we're keeping a list of our questions at this point that will definitely ping you and your team. Um for those that we really need that level of kind of. Expertise, some of these items you see on the list are kind of just things we want to talk about um soon or. Convince the council to talk about and possibly work on, um so. I I mean, that's my take, Mark, what do you think?
Uh yeah, I would never kick anyone out of a meeting, I just don't think you would gain anything from it, so.
Sounds good. That would be best to ask, hope you all have a great rest of your evening.
Thank you.
What to do with the work plan for next year?
Good, see ya.
Thank you.
I'll say, I'm gonna do my best here, I've uh the reason I stayed home is I've got a little bit of chest stuff going on, so. Pardon the uh, if I cough, well, there you go, at least I'm not in the room with you. Um so uh. I wasn't quite, I didn't really do any thinking about how to go through this, this uh list. Um. Mark, any suggestions? I mean, I think some of these were kind of men- mentioned at different times and for different reasons and in different ways. They were kind of flagged items that we felt like we wanted to. Put some, maybe put some energy into, I know there's at least one that I was. Was, it's the one at the very bottom, it wasn't necessarily about planning commission, it was more about flagging. For the city that there's some issues. Having to do with some, you know, surging use of roads like Perkins and whatnot, I'm not sure that's a planning commission job. But it was more about teeing up that item. For and getting it to the right place, um so. I don't know, Mark, do you have a suggestion how to go through these? Should we just kind of? Brief on each one of these and then um figure out if it needs a different owner than the planning commission?
Yeah, we could, we could do that, my deliverable from doing this, what I need as staff to get out of this is your twenty twenty five work plan. I need to bring that to city council. The intent of this list is to capture, so we're not forgetting any. Like a parking lot, so I guess the first test is, have we forgotten any? Is this the list? And then go through them and say, yeah, twenty twenty five planning commission, or like the last item. Uh see if we can add it to active transportation, another ongoing effort elsewhere.
And as I recall from the last meeting, this was like, to your point, Mark, this was our list of ideas of. If we had nothing else to do after comp plan. What would we want to focus on? One of one of the asks was, does city council have anything for us that they think is important for us to focus on? And it sounds like there's nothing burning there at this point. So we know we have the climate element that's gonna be coming back at some point, we know we have what we were just talking about. So to me, it seems like the question is. In all of the time that we have here at the commission. Is there anything else on this list that rises to the top? Because otherwise, it seems like it's an editing exercise, because I think this is far too much for us to tackle.
Well, and it doesn't include the policy.
Right.
Yeah.
Which is like half the year, right?
Uh at planning connected. Yeah, the rest of this year and at least three months in twenty twenty five. There might be some areas here that are complimentary to our middle housing conversation that we should address. That might be priorities. Example would be RUEs, exactly, yeah.
Yeah, so I guess, I I guess I would say that um. We're really talking about what are we gonna do after Q one? Except for those items that are directly related to middle housing code, like RUEs. But so it's kind of getting a temperature read from the group, which of these other things? Um. Do we need to, or do we want to tackle? Um. Several of them are very much kind of comp plan type related, but. So they might be things that we might want to work on in preparation for submitting them as part of an annual update or something like that. Um in, you know, in twenty twenty five or twenty twenty six. Um and some of these, I think we were wanting to learn, honestly. Like some of these questions about why have we not seen the level of economic development in Southern Gateway? As the plan that we wrote for that area. Was we imagined would would sort of trigger. So that to me is kind of more about learning, I'm not sure we even, you know, we're not ready to say, well, what does the answer need to look like, but it's like what? What's happening there, and I think that that would be a really interesting and valuable discussion for us to have. But it doesn't, it's not time constrained, I mean, middle housing and the things attached to it are what we must do right now.
So why don't we just go through the list in terms of what's related to middle housing that we want to address? Such as reasonable, such as RUEs, we know that that's going to be part of that conversation.
I mean, the climate element.
The climate, yeah.
I think current code, I think there's some interest in looking at. We want to. Want a pieces of that that maybe need updating. Cheer, Mike, Yanni.
I think we should look at the building code, just it, is there an opportunity to see? Just get us all on the same page with the building code, revisiting some of these areas that I think middle housing touches upon.
Not not as I see the building codes, let's take that as. If you mean development code, yes.
The development, oh, yeah, not the building, not like the must use this or whatever installation, no, sorry. The development code, what what the city has at this point in time.
Yeah.
As a reference.
Now, we uh without adding to this list, we will be doing that. Twenty like clearly example, not to re steer the discussion. Shoreline master program, we looked at twenty nineteen, COVID hit, it died. Boys to go, do we have to update it? Absolutely. Are we, did we miss the last round? Yes, we did. It's coming, but we need a contract, it needs to exist after these tier one efforts. Um wireless code, sign code, sign code's already underway. Subdivision code, so they're not being forgotten, but they don't necessarily need to be added to this list. They're all examples of existing development codes that have not been touched for a long time. But I would say we'll get to them as we can, a lot of this staff originally at Shoreline. And a consultant, um and not the same priority or need as a discussion about RUEs.
So can I, can I suggest we just try to bin these and, sorry, I'm I'm listening the best I can, so. Sorry if I'm interrupting, but I just, I'm trying to find a path forward here so we can knock this out. I thought, I mean, there's a bin of these that are related to middle housing or have a nexus, that's priority one. So I think that's probably the the RUEs, the climate element. And. I think those were the. Yeah, existing, existing code. Yeah, so those seem like. Priority one in that sense because of how they connect to middle housing. Then there are some things that, and I'm just describing the bins here, and we can then decide where things go. Um there are some things that we'd like, we'd like to rest. Uh potentially um in the future, after we get this middle housing body of work done. There's also a category, there's a couple of updates about things that other committees have worked on, tree canopy, the uh parks plan. Things like that, that those to me could be slotted in when it makes sense, I mean, yes, we want those. But those could be, you know, kind of a part of an agenda when we don't have. You know, a hard deadline on something like middle housing. And then lastly, there's kind of this category of. Things we want to flag for council, like. Traffic safety, given the new light rail station and how people. Drive on Perkins and Fortieth, um so, and that's how I see this grouping of things, I don't know, if anyone have a. Want to do a better job than me of defining what the bins are?
Uh oh, I gotta visually put this down.
Sam, Sam has been waiting to weigh in.
No, I just had a question, um in that first bucket, and I like, I don't have a concern with the bucketing, Yanni, but for the first bucket. Do we consider as adjacent to the middle housing code updates, uh a relook or. A questioning of whether any changes to the design standard seems to be in place? So the form and scale of middle housing that we're going to be permitting. Matches with kind of the character of the community to the extent that's a consideration. And commerce does have a whole toolkit and set of guidelines. Uh part and parcel with the middle housing, that's for objective design standards.
You don't have to design standards for single family though.
No, no, but we could, and so the legislation says. If we don't have for a single family, you will not have for middle housing, right? But in this effort, you you can have them for both.
Yeah, so it's a question of, is that something we would want to consider as part and parcel or not?
Is is that the timeline too roughly? So we're we're, I feel like we're talking about. Wanting to come up with the an agenda item for Jack, July, August, October, November, December, but then there's also. A bunch of stuff related to the middle, middle housing that's due by Jack, June of twenty twenty five, is that?
Yeah, well, it's new from us to council much earlier than that, so.
Perfect deadline then?
If you look at April, May, June as environmental review, commerce and city council. Middle housing needs to be pulled back to March.
March, okay, that's wow.
And that would be uh. November and March planning.
Oh, we're still, boy, then we have a big gap here then.
And then when does the?
You'll, you'll be working on climate elements till June. That'll satisfy the grant, but the contract runs through December. June or July to December, city council.
But this would tie a commission that you give there.
Yanni, I was thinking um earlier when council member Levo was talking about uh this money with cameras and so forth. And it it being money that could fly safe streets. Maybe some of that uh, the traffic items that are on this list and what we've been talking about. Maybe it makes sense for us to revisit safe streets and put some public. Maybe it makes sense for us to revisit safe streets and put some public hearings and sort of. Check the recommendations and that, are they, do they need to be added to or amended in any way? Could we help council out? I mean, if we're passing all this to them, they're gonna be too busy to tackle it, I would guess. Can't speak on their behalf, but maybe it makes sense for us to spend the later summer and fall. Revisiting safe streets, especially if we've got revenue that's being generated, we need to have a, a good plan for how to spend it.
I would, personally, I'd love to hear what the council thinks about that. Would they like to have us put time into that? I mean, I, I think it sounds smart. I, I don't argue with that at all. But is the time, is the timing right? Would they, would they find that valuable for their work to have us? Spend some amount of time on that. I, I'm totally open to that.
So isn't the process that we pose a plan? That's submitted to the council and then they determine whether or not they like that plan? So we can make that suggestion. And if you guys don't like it, you can say, yeah, make some suggestions.
So I would suggest that you do something like as you talked about in the tiers. So sometimes uh, I create a plan, but also describe the other things that you talked about. And um, the council may say, well, I'm glad you talked about that. You didn't put it on the plan, but I think you should work on it. So.
Can, can we maybe ask you to ask them, we're, we're looking for something, we're ticking the tire, looking for something, if there's something they want.
I was gonna take this list and put it.
See, that's what I'm comfortable with. Let's provide, let's, do a brainstorming, let's provide that list.
It will work both ways and that um. You know, I, I don't know the council's gonna go, oh, okay, let's pick these uh, three things that we think the planning. Commission should work on. I think it should be a discussion. Uh, because it works best when you have a strong interest in something, in something. Because then the product that you develop is a result of that interest section. It's a little harder when we say, oh, well, I'd like you to work on source.
Also, it's a matter of, can they, uh, like shoreline. Uh, the master plan that's on our list, I think three, there's in a row. And the city didn't have bandwidth or the consultant, you know, so there may be some things that. The city can't put together because of staff time or available funding, but you know, we can't work on something where we don't have an expert uh, or experts needed. So I think that's part of that calculus too.
I, I just think it would be such a missed opportunity. We've got all these volunteers and for you as well, if there's something that we could do to help.
Yeah, so it's both really want, yeah. It, it works best when you have a strong interest in something and as a volunteer.
So when we did, we said, actually, this list came out of brainstorm that we did together. And there was a lot of energy, a lot of excitement about economic development. I don't know if y'all remember that, but uh, there, you know, we had a lot of conversation about that. That was probably one of the most.
I think that's interesting, David, because it kind of goes to what Yanni was saying, when he was trying to bin these topics, it, it kind of goes with. The Southern Gateway, like why haven't we seen some of the development that we thought? And then the question for economic development is this sort of feasibility, how feasible is it? For us to rezone areas to allow more commercial development in our community, we need factor, group areas and you know. All the things that I have no idea, but um, it, it, it is, it does fit nicely in that bin, uh, Yanni, I think that. That uh, information gathering. Uh, almost like a landscape study of key issues that we have passion around.
Yeah, I echo that economic development one. I mean, we've talked about it so much here and what, you know, some fact finding, some exploration. And I remember as well, the survey results that we did, that was one of the key themes that came through. People wanted more. Kind of form and scale of neighborhood survey, you know. Commercial, you know, as we talk about the coffee shop, they're going away, like, I mean, they're gone because they couldn't find a place here in town. So they're going to like terrorists, like.
I, I think though, it's really a sub area study at this point of form, but we need to, we need a consultant on board. To be able to make the feasibility study in essence around that corridor. Uh, and I, I don't know if that's really um, within our wheelhouse at this point, really, it's a matter of the council, you know, allocating those funds. And uh, having a contract put out for, for that. Um. I personally would like to look at the, the tree ordinance, and I know there's a separate. Group, but perhaps we can collaborate with that group because we just finished the tree canopy study, but again. As I said before, there's no discussion about how we manage it. And the permitting process right now as it stands. Uh, you have to go, every time you go in, you have to. Get a biologist to look at it. Again, if we could have, I think there's a forest management plan, but if we can look at to see how we streamline that process. For residents to be able to come up with a, a lot specific plan. Uh, and maybe it's a collaboration with the, the, the tree board, but you know, that to me seems like something that we could get our teeth into, really help the city. Help the residents, you know, have it. Uh, so anyways, I will continue to push that as an offer for the group.
Yeah, that's an ideal. As, as we can talk about a discussion in twenty twenty five. Tree board is working on tree list, updating it and the diameters. That will go into an ordinance go forward, but that's what they're doing with Drew. She has the independence to work on those ordinances. She is also a great resource to come and explain what the codes are, what the processes are, what they could be. And not detract from our bad work. Existing resource she has time and I'm doing. Yeah, she's, she's an expert.
So that could be one of the sub conversations. But, but I think what we need to do is look at what's.
So I get, I guess one comment um, to your point, Lois, I, I guess I'm imagining this discussion around economic development and so forth. Is possibly starting out in a way where it's not about consultants and experts. Like, I think one of the things, and I've had several, you know, friends and neighbors mention this. You know, like, hey, have you guys, have you guys just pulled some local, you know, developers or business leaders together to come talk with you? Right? We don't need a consultant today. We will need some staff time. I, I don't mean to say it's. Totally free and easy of effort, but I don't think it's about starting by hiring a consultant. I think about it more as. Bringing in, you know, whether it's commercial or residential, you know, experts. To come talk with us, have a conversation. I think there'd be interest in even a community, you know, hearing that type of conversation. Cause that comes up all the time. So that's kind of what I was thinking about as first steps, rather than, hey, city council, go find money, go find a consultant. Maybe that's what comes out of it. To help us think through what we could change going forward. But I'm thinking about this more as like fact finding and, and understanding what's going on, you know, why are we not seeing this? Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, you, you, you and I talked about this, gosh, like before the comp planning started, it was something we wanted to do with that property owner over by um. Uh, what do you call it? Pacific exteriors. Uh, that, that lot that's been scheduled for multi-family and it's not been built. But it's been on the market. Remember that conversation we had?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, it's a really great idea. I'd love to revive that i- idea of bringing in um, developers in our community to find out. You know, I, I think in many ways, we, when we had that conversation before, it was about also finding out what works for them and what doesn't. Which could inform our middle housing work. Uh, to, to understand where the, like, the thresholds are for what makes. You know, a duplex may be more attractive than a, you know, a single family or what might make a triplex more attractive and use the triplex as an incentive. Over a single family, but I, I don't think we have that clarity from the, the people who have the capital to do it.
We, I'd be happy to entertain that with our time, but again, I, I'm not sure, I think we're gonna hit a wall because. Uh, really, we, I mean, we need somebody to come up with a map of the area. Uh, look at the map and do like a, a critical areas overlay on that. And I think that's really, um, we can talk about, I, I love the idea of bringing developers in. It, you know, it, it's a great way to, to get us thinking about it. But truly to pursue it requires kind of data, you know, kind of. Having um, a consultant, paid consultant to come up with these maps, come up with a survey. Uh, and, but we can absolutely, I would be totally for discussing it. Um.
Well, I think it's more of a, of a discussion, it's more of a focus as we go down, down the route.
Yeah.
So that we can actually, you know, so we have that conversation where we determine what we want to do. And then maybe perhaps we approach the city council and say, hey, this is our, this is what we propose, this is what we think, right? Uh, how we might wanna address economic development.
We can absolutely have that discussion and decide, do we put it for a vote to, well, the council. I guess what I'm trying to get the group to think about is what are the deliverables that we as a group want to provide, right? Uh, we can have these discussions. Um, do we at the end of it want to actually formally uh, vote to uh, propose something to the council? But as a group, I'm asking you guys to consider what deliverables we can provide. Uh, you guys have labor. We could talk about design elements, we could talk about commercial developments. But uh, it's a missed opportunity because we, this is a formal group. And I, I think being able to come up with something concrete would be ideal.
So, so give us an example of something that will be concrete.
Okay, um. I did the tree, if we look at, it's just us looking over the ordinance to see any weak spots. So we can consider how can we?
So Lois, I, I invite you to go to the tree board and attend one of the meetings and ask them what, what might be missing.
I. I guess, can you tell me, what am I missing then, please?
I, I don't, so, so I.
What am I missing that?
I, I think.
Might I just say, the tree ordinance is one example. I push that. If you disagree, you can absolutely disagree. We're all here to try to build the city together or, or just make our time more productive. Is, is that correct? And I'm not trying to say we can't talk about this stuff. I, I guess um. Because we are somewhat of an organized group, uh, we have the ability to look at things like the ordinance inconsistencies. And that makes so much sense. And that to me is a, a really good use of our time. I, I'm not sure of me going to the tree ordinance, what, what is it that you would like to tell me that I'm missing? Cause clearly there's something that you see that I'm not seeing, so please, I would love to know what that is.
Well, I, I, for one thing, I do not wanna step on. There's a tree board that exists for, for a reason, right? And as another. Counsel or another entity that's, the plan, I do not want the planning commission stepping on the. On the preview of the, of the tree.
No, I'm collaborating, I'm proposing to collaborate because. Um, I have, we have uh, actually a, a planning commissioner who bunked up against the, 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 the tree ordinance. And um, she did go before the planning, the tree board. It's a, it's, it's um. It perhaps needs to be updated because the management of the forestry, the tree canopy really falls on the residents. And the sign ordinance doesn't keep up with that ability to do that. And, and that's what I'm saying with, it is absolutely within our purview to be able to look at that ordinance. And say, hey, it doesn't make sense because the, for example, as I pointed out to the group. Residents have to go back, they, they go and get a permit, this is the current situation. They need to get a biologist to stamp one tree. And then. If they have a second tree, they need to go through that whole process again, is, and, and. We have to then call the biologist, the horticulturist again. Uh, so this is the state of the ordinance as it stands. It's very costly. Uh, we're talking tens of thousands of dollars for the residents. But if the, if we could come up with a site plan, which we already do when we look at properties and developments and that sort of thing. If Drew is, is really talented, as, as it sounds she is. Drew should be able to look at diseased trees and help in, in a basically a, a permitted plan for that property. Drew should be able to identify there are three trees that are diseased or overgrowing or, or something of that nature. And not just look at one, but look at all three.
She did that for us, like maybe a month ago, she came out to do the site survey. I don't know if that's the same thing.
It is, but then expires. How, how long did you have to, to do that? I think it's like two years.
So I wonder if we could shift the conversation to, uh, we, I, I totally get that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, but I'm wondering if we, for the sake of time, looking at what, what we wanna accomplish, because you need to take this to city council, that's our twenty twenty five plan.
Yeah.
If we just vote on what we see as being the, the focus.
That's what I'm saying, that's what we're talking about right now, is, is what we're gonna do for this remainder of the time.
I, I get that's what you're talking about, but.
I understand that. And I agree with you, with all due respect, but you were asking me why I'm talking about that, so just wanna make sure.
I was asking for a concrete example.
Okay, and I, yeah, I guess I, I was, I thought it was clear, but perhaps it was not. Um, and you know, Yanni, I'm okay talking about the economic development. I love that, really, you know, but. Uh, is, the question I have is, is there something that we could do? To maybe as a planning commission, I expect to look at zoning codes, I expect to look at the ordinances. Um, talking about what could be built, what, I, I love that too, but really, we all know, I mean, I've pointed out the problem. We have a funding problem. And we could talk about it until we're blue in the face, but really uh, meaningfully uh, helping the city would be, I, I think the council already has. You know, enough um. Gears to think about this problem more so than us. Uh, that's why I think uh. Deciding what we're gonna do with the, the four million dollars, I think you guys can handle that. Um. But I think for us, uh, we, I'm just looking for areas where we could. Help with the financial shortfall that the city has and see where we can, you know, we as a group can come into play for that. And that's what I'm asking. Uh, the group to consider.
If, so if I may say, in the remaining time, um, cause I think this is well taken, Lois, I think, you know, there's. Definitely an opportunity to learn more about what the tree board's doing. The Mark's point, we could even have a briefing on that to see if there's opportunities to collaborate. Or to support in deliverables. I might just continue what you were doing and put out the board.
Yeah.
The ideas we've been talking about, so maybe we can get to uh. The council member Levo's idea of, here's what we think we're gonna work on, here's some other things we talked about. Um, and so much is gonna change between now and then, so I don't think we have to have a locked in stone exactly what we're gonna do this month and this month and this month. Cause we don't know how this is gonna play out, but what I've heard is economic. Probably spelling that wrong. Tree. And what I heard over here on middle housing, we had some, we were kind of, Yanna, you had kind of bucketed that as RUEs. Remind me, what else was?
Uh, current regulations and the climate element.
Design standards maybe.
And I think the ADU is also uh, relevant to this, this, the middle housing discussion.
Right, talked about that. Was there anything else we talked about? That we felt was part of one of those two elements? Or that we've talked about potentially for second half of year?
You did talk about uh, street, safe streets. Opportunities there.
And there was a question of. I think, was that the one that somebody had said, is that really our purview or is that somebody else's purview?
Or could it be in another bucket? And my question would be, is that what active transportation means?
Um. It's a combination, so what active transportation might be cars and the vehicles, but there's also passive.
They're all adjacent.
They're all adjacent.
But isn't there an effort for active transportation planned?
I would just offer that there's opportunities for the city to do better.
We have a guiding document of safe streets, uh, uh, active transportation initiative. So one's like a guiding document, one's an initiative, one's. Community interest, right? Traffic calming came out of like ongoing community feedback. You know, safer, non-motorized transportation, so I think they're all adjacent, they're just different inputs.
So is that one that there's consensus or at least some interest of the commission that we would kind of propose as a picture workshop?
Yeah.
I, I guess I'm confused on what capacity, like again, what, and are we just. Talking about it and like, we all, what are we talking about? Like what's? What's the deliverable that we're trying to achieve in that discussion?
An updated safe streets document, because uh, when it came up a few months ago, I think we talked about whether or not it uh. Accounted for, um, like, when it got published, there may have been things that were still missing from it, like some people didn't feel like their street. Was in, you know, recognized appropriately or the. Was in, you know, recognized appropriately or the treatment that was recommended wasn't appropriate treatment. We've also had the light rail station open, so it's really about what in the safe streets document is still relevant, what needs updating? And um, and, and doesn't it count for, you know, the second transportation and, and it's really.
Perfect, yeah.
The deliverable would be an updated safe streets document.
Totally, yeah. Another one that I would like to throw out, the post plan is really, 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 really outdated, like.
Which one?
The post plan, that our comp plan or first one? Uh, but again, I don't know if parks that, again, I don't know if that's.
It is, that would be another one. We can get planning commission input. It's budgeted for twenty twenty five. Greatly produced, focused on one effort, what do we have, what is happening a little? The parks recreational board is the primary committee. Or he's the staff member, I believe there's thirty thousand in the draft budget. And planning commission input can be given to that existing effort.
Yeah, almost to me, I, I think are, are very good. Um.
And I mean, this to me, strikes me as ambitious. And. If there's a need where something exigent comes up that council wants us to work on that we learned about here. Or that is an exigent issue that comes up, we can propose an update to the council of what we work on, if we need to shift priorities. But how does this look to people?
That's great, yeah. Are we voting on this then, or are we?
I think, Yanni, do you, were you gonna, you probably can't even see this, I'm sorry.
No, I can't see the writing from, from on my little screen here, but I, I appreciate your, you're trying to organize things visually, that, that always helps. I mean, I'm not, I mean, to me, I don't think there, I've heard any of these topics as being something that we all feel. Just doesn't belong here at all. We, we're having some discussions about what are we trying to achieve and I think that's valid. We're not gonna solve that tonight. So what I think we could do is maybe just create some language and I could take a stab at this and circulate it. But to basically describe what these bins are, what do we mean, so that the council can look at our stuff and say, hey, okay. They've got these three things that they, they know they wanna tackle soon because they relate to middle housing. Then there are these other things that, you know, we have, we have some ideas about how to move forward with it, some are a little bit more vague. And, but let's get, let's get some, you know, reaction to that. We can't do all of this in twenty twenty five, we can't. So I would love to hear if, you know, council says, you know what, why don't you guys wait till twenty twenty six? We're asking the tree board to do X, Y, and Z, or maybe they say, you know, parks, you know, parks plan. Better to, you know, wait. I don't know if that's the answer, I'm just trying to give examples here of the scenarios. And, you know, let's get that feedback from them. We know what we gotta do in the first six months, so. That gives us some room to, you know, prioritize for the second. And I wanna say, we're, we're down about seven minutes, so that's the other reason, like, let's not. I don't actually think we need to vote this list, I don't think, because we're trying to describe what we see as important topics. I'm not hearing anybody saying, strike that topic entirely, so. Let's document them and let's get some feedback.
Mark, do you think we need a motion or are we good if we just, we're, we're ahead of the game, we, we have the list.
Okay.
November meeting, December meeting, formally your draft work plan. I started on January eighth and we did work on it at city council, so that must have been January, February. I forget what the code says, but I'll snap picture, we have two more shots to, to this.
Perfect.
Cool.
Thank you.
And I'll send it to you, Yanni.
Yeah, again, send me those photos, thank you very much. Um, so let's, thank you everyone, I, I, I really appreciate the discussion, again, it's. Little hard to lead a discussion from here, but there we go, we're doing what we can. Um. Any, uh, do we have any new business?
We do not.
Excellent. Let's talk about planning commission vacancies and recruitment.
Mr. Kramer is relocating after this year. Um, is willing to stay on for the remainder of the year, but transition. The city clerk's doing a recruitment for planning mission, tree board, parks board. And I think that's it. Don't know that we have any active applicants. But if you have any ideas, suggestions, outreach, funnel them to the mayor. Sit through the city clerk and they'll keep advertising, uh, but we know that, uh, Alyssa, uh, Kramer is. Short term.
Okay, um, but there's no, there's not like a firm application deadline, it's an ongoing process until we get some good people.
Yes.
Okay.
And just, uh, uh, next year, I think we are done too. I think you guys are losing two more commissioners next year, so.
Um, said it, uh, that he reinstated us for the full term.
You weren't informed. No, you were, I just, there's so many emails. I know that that last email was definite, cause he did the research and it was a long time.
It doesn't mean we have to fill it and so, uh, one of the things, I said to Ashlyn is depending on. What kind of candidate pool you get, it looks like we need to replace Melissa, and I wouldn't think of vacant seat because I've. Shared long enough with vacant seats and it's, it's kind of hard to build that cohesion, so I'm, I'm glad to stick around. Until there's somebody that's really just awesome that we can onboard without it feeling like we've lost steam as a group. I mean, I do believe them till the moment, so. But not necessarily, you know, hankering to stay around for two more years, although I am, I am very interested in this work that. There is going on. I just don't wanna take up, you know, space that maybe be owned by somebody else in the community. Our housing forum, we guys had eighty people in attendance between online and in person and all that. You know, I'm really optimistic that, you know, somebody might come out of that and say, you know.
Well, I, I'd say as, as current vice chair, really appreciate your willingness to, to stay on until we have a good. Um, succession plan, so I appreciate that and, uh, and, you know. Things also happen, people sometimes have to step down from things and it would be great if we had a, you know, little bit of a pool of people who are interested. Even if we don't have a seat right away, so I think, you know, we should all do some reaching out. I already tried to. Convince somebody who I thought would have been great, but he just doesn't think he can handle it schedule wise right now, but I, I might try him again. Um, all right, so I don't think we have any public, uh, citizen resident, uh, comments. Um, I, I wanna make a comment about that agenda item though. And I know that we did this in the comp plan and I believe, and I've seen this a lot in my work at the county. We're getting rid of the term citizen a lot. Because it implies something and it ha- and can be a loaded term, in fact, cause. Citizen of a place has some meaning as opposed to a resident, so I'm just curious if at some point we might consider, um. Changing even the name of the item on our standing agenda, so just something to think about, it's, it's. That discussion is happening enough in my world that now it's like whenever I see that word, I, I kind of question whether it should be there. Um, so, there we go.
It may just be a typo. Um, it seems like we could find the public. Well, the first page at the beginning of the meeting, consistent with the clerk and throughout all the things, it says public comments, they flip the page, there's. Additional sim- citizen comments.
Yeah, I, I would, uh, suggest we change that to additional public comment.
I will ask Matt, then you can go from there. Matt has control over the Zoom webinar and the formatting of agendas. We just do content.
Great.
Okay.
Um, so agenda for next meeting, I think we're gonna get pretty deep or get, start really getting into our. Middle housing business and sounds like we need to finalize some work plan stuff. Is that right, Mark? Does that sound right? Okay. All right, anything else for the good of the order before we look for a motion to adjourn right at nine o'clock? Okay. Anyone like to move?
Hi.
All right. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Yanni.
Thank you.
Thank you.